Service Committee, February 6, 2025.
Service Committee called to order at 6 o'clock. Members present: Ciaran Sherrick, Kevin Myers, Zion Hickman, I myself, Chris Moritz, Chair. This time any public participation? I'm going to start it off. We'll do that again, aren't we?
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. I have a couple of things tonight I want to bring up. The thing that's on tonight is the Utility Service Superintendent. Why does the city need this position? How much is this going to cost us? The city has done fine without this position for years and years and years. All of a sudden, now we've got to fill a position and that we don't have any money in the budget. Plus, part of this money comes out of the water fund. But yet, you still have a laid-off city worker. Don't you think you ought to think about that person first before you look at this? Second of all, about the BCO Chapter 137 Airport Commission. Under the Rules of Procedure, Section C, Miscellaneous Number 4, all committee referrals shall be made by the President of Council during council meeting. Mr. Myers made the referral for the Service Committee, not the President of Council. Mr. Myers did not want to say why or what was going on or what was going to be discussed. You'll have to wait until Thursday night. Why was this not in the committee packets nor on documents nor on demand for the public to review? Why is Mr. Myers hiding more information from the public? The budget was hidden from us, along with so many other things that this council administration has done about hiding things. Or is this another backdoor deal between Mr. Myers and Fred Fisher? Are they both trying to change the staffing levels of the commission? Just because Mr. Fisher has butthurt over the terminal and didn't get his way on this, now he and Mr. Myers wants to change the number of members of the Airport Commission to stack the deck of this commission so that Mr. Fisher can get his way. The Airport Commission is fine as the way it is. I believe that the Airport Commission should censor Mr. Fisher for trying to sabotage the airport project under Robert's Rules of Order. I feel that Mr. Fisher should be also removed from this commission because he is not working toward the best interests of the airport. He is only for his own personal narrative and agenda. That is why Mr. Myers wanted to be appointed to the Service Committee so he could bring this to the committee and vote for it. What, more dirty politics? This is not the type of leadership this community needs. We need open, honest people that have integrity, high moral values, and be truthful of our leaders. Next, what about the missing money from the water fund? Don't you think the taxpayers need to know what is going on? The Service Safety Director gave vague answers to this issue on Tuesday night. So are you going to rob the general fund now? Please explain. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, move on to approval of minutes for January 23, 2025. I commotion to accept those.
I'll second that.
First by Kevin Myers, second by Aaron Sherrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First on his agenda for tonight is material bids. I'd like to have a motion for those to go out two-bid. For material bids, we have a packet on them. Is that the way you want to do that?
Yeah, it's requested as an emergency because of the timeline?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there you go. As an emergency. I didn't have it written down.
I'll request emergency legislation authorizing the Service Director to advertise for bids to enter into the contracts for the purchase of various materials and supplies as an emergency.
I'll second.
First by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Hickman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Next on our agenda is ODOT State Route 4 North. Do we have anything else on that, or?
This is a 2026 project, so it will not have to be an emergency. But they're going from, it sounds like they're going from 19 north on to our city, on up to Seneca County line.
So we just want to keep this on our open projects for now? We're not going to do any of those?
No, I think we've got to get the legislation done.
What was the deadline for this to be turned into the state?
So, yeah, we are going to be pushing away on it then.
We need to request legislation, but not as an emergency.
Yeah, we need to request legislation, pass this, but not as an emergency.
So good.
I don't think it has to be an emergency.
You said not as an emergency.
Not as an emergency.
I apologize.
Yeah. First with Mr. Myers, second by Ciaran Sherrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. This already got brung up once tonight by the public. Utility Service Superintendent, I believe, you'd like to speak on that?
Sure. Just want to clear up some confusion. This isn't a new job. This is a job that has developed from what has been asked of Jeff Dunn over the last several years. This is all the work that he's been doing. It's just, he's going to be retiring. Somebody needs to take over and do what he has been doing. And his current job classification, that is official, doesn't include any, hardly any of this. That is the point of the description. It's not creating a new position to hire somebody new. It's to replace Jeff Dunn when he retires.
Thank you for clarifying. Anybody else have any questions on this?
Yeah, why is this now a non-union job?
I'm not sure. I just did what I thought.
I did not hear the question.
Why is this now a non-union job? Jeff's in the union, so his job's being taken out of the union for what reason?
That position will stay in the billet. Just position will, but it will not be filled. They used to do superintendents a long time ago, or not a long time ago, a few years ago, and we want to get back to that.
Does this job cover any of the jobs already handled by any of the foremen? The way it's described now?
So Jeff's a working foreman?
Mm-hmm. But he's a union person, so...
Potential. This position will not be.
So are you taking a job from the union with this job?
It'll still be in the billet if anyone wants to fill it at any given time.
So, yes, the answer is yes, you're taking a job from the union and making a new position with it.
Okay, yes.
I mean, will this not create some issues?
Possibly. So I've talked to the union one time already, and we were going to talk again.
So does this need to be talked about tonight still? Would you like more chance to talk to the union again, that we can table this for now?
This is, it has to go through you guys for it to go anywhere.
I personally am not one that wants to step on our union's toes. They do an amazing job. I mean, we've got, we've got great workers here. I mean, I would want to make sure that it was okay before I did anything.
A little context with what Aaron's talking about. Before there were these multiple superintendent positions, I believe Jerry Diber was one. He was not in the union. I believe Water Treatment was Donnie Fox. I don't believe he was in the union as well. And whoever was the position that Tim Wood is possibly wasn't in the union. And what had happened was the city, I don't know, around the time of, after Baja was closing and stuff, when we were starting to run out of money, I think what they did was they just eliminated those superintendent positions and just let people in the union take over and do the work that was being done by those positions. And Jeff Dunn, I think he might have been asked to step out of the union and into that superintendent job. And he said, no. He said, no, I don't believe he was agreeable to getting out of the union. He wanted to stay in the union. And I think if, if he was agreeable at the time, I think they would have let him step up in Jerry Diber's position. But they kind of accommodated Jeff's wishes to stay in the union. And that's how you're currently being served by that position with being union. I think what Tommy is wanting is, they're wanting to go back to how it was when Jerry Diber was doing that. Does that make any sense?
Tommy, you got any more comments on that?
And the EPA is requiring us to have a Class II collections person. In order to get someone like that, I think we're going to have to, you know, where they're able to go out anytime and get the collections for the sewer treatment, or sewer line position.
Now, and then the other thing with the way it is now with Jeff Dunn being in the union, there actually is some issues. I have had some of the union people tell me, and this is over the course of multiple years here, because discipline, a union member is not allowed to discipline another union member. And so that is kind of an issue with a supervisor being in the union. So it's probably best that that be, I've had, I've had multiple union members that have told me, they don't think one union member should be in a position that tells another union member what to do, like as a supervisor. It's, it's going back to the way it should be, I think, is what this position is. So it, it's not that we're taking away a union job, it's just there might have been a union job that was in the union for the last several years that maybe shouldn't have been in the union, if that makes it any more explainable.
Hey, where's the pay rate of this fall versus what Mr. Dunn's position is paid currently?
It's pretty much the same, except for this person will not get the differential for the collections. It'll be all-inclusive in his pay, and their, and, I shouldn't say his, in their pay.
So as it affects our budget, the more or less are exactly the same as what we're paying right now?
It's probably going to be a little bit more, but it's not going to be...
Do you know how much more?
I don't have it with me. I do have a range weight.
So you've talked to the union, so now it's time to create a job, goes through council, so you can talk to the union about it, correct? Is that the way it's working?
It's, it's probably how it's going to have to, to make sure that the council's okay, to go to the union and talk to them, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So I just want to... You understand me, Aaron?
Oh, I understand.
And in my personal experience...
Sorry. When I know Mr. White had said something where, about the water fund, just to double-check with you guys, my understanding is this position, because it is taking over for current foreman position, he is not paid out of the water fund at all.
He will not be paid out of the water.
Okay, just double-checking. And then, second, I was reading the job description right before I came out here. I would have talked to you guys about it earlier. The only thing I had a concern with is that it does not, it appears as if that person will not have to do their own billing, but they will be working in conjunction with the utility office downstairs. I might remove that if possible, because on my end, I see it as, this person's going to be, I assume elevated over the position of the current foremans. And when we're talking about Donnie Fox, Jerry Diber, Terry Spiegel, Terry Spiegel used to be in charge of both the departments that currently Chad Slagle and Tim Wood run. Terry Spiegel is able to sign the jackets for all of those people, right? Took some of the work off of, at the time, Jeff Wagner's plate. So with this person being able to sign the bills, Tommy would no longer have to sign for them. Does that make sense? So if you take that out of there, that person can pay the bills again. Tommy doesn't have to sign for all the bills in the city. And then the person who is actually signing off on the bill should know exactly what those bills are paying, you know? And if I have a question, I can go directly to that person and say, what is this bill for? And there's also portions that are happening where the, like, say, the Parks Department, their bills are being paid out of the utility office, but the utility, the computer supervisor, they're not paid out of the Parks Department. So they are paying bills and doing service for a department that they're not paid from. Does that make sense? So, not saying that they couldn't work in conjunction or somehow figure it out, just the wording, how it's in there currently, makes it seem as if they may not be paying bills. And if they're not, like I said, to me, it's just hard to reconcile, you know, Terry Spiegel being able to sign the document, and then this person who's in a, going to be in a position the same as what Terry Spiegel was doing, will not be signing that same paperwork and okaying those bills to be paid. That's it. If it made sense, I apologize.
Are you in agreement with that, Tommy? Or is that something we need to look at, change it before we?
Um, yeah.
Or even Brandon might have an opinion on that?
I think we can look at that.
Oh, is that Tommy editing?
Yeah.
Okay, go look at that, okay.
Yeah.
Well, then we're going to table this for now, then. Bring it up next committee meeting, in my opinion.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I'm going to go this way for today. BCO Chapter 1137 Airport Commission.
So I want to thank Mr. White for all of his assumptions and presumptions. However, I'll set the record straight now. Yeah, I did have a sit-down meeting with Fred Fisher, and he brought up a couple of things, and my intention was to bring them to this committee to have a discussion. And then my suggestion is going to be, after I bring up this list of things, that Mr. Moritz, either you by yourself or you and one other member of the committee, go meet with the Airport Commission to have discussion. But I see a majority of them are here tonight, so whether you want to, I still think it's better to go and have a conversation with them and then go from there. So the first thing that he brought up was, we do have to make a change to this, because it says B.C.R., area Chamber of Commerce, and that's now been changed to Crawford County Chamber of Commerce. One of the things, and he was giving me some rundown of how the Airport Commission works, and from what I read on here, you know, there's different people appointed from different places, but it doesn't spell out whose appointments are in which years. I just think it needs to be a little more clear, like in even years, you have these appointments; in odd years, you have these appointments. And then he also suggested, because we are designated the county airport, that the county commissioners might be considered to have somebody appointing somebody, as well as the partnership. These were suggestions of his, and I just wanted to bring them all forward. So again, my suggestion is that you set up a time that either you yourself or you and one of the rest of the committee members go to, like the next meeting or whatever.
I would have a problem with that. I've met with them before. I would hope to be with them again. I don't think about some of those people either, too. Get ahold of us, set up a time. And I'm available anytime here today, right now, for the next two weeks, anyway. So if you guys agree with that, we'll figure out a way to set up a time to talk to each other. Also, do we want that to coincide with our council member time?
Well, no, because, I don't think so, because we don't have anybody from the council who is on the committee, so I don't think that would matter. You have an appointment by the mayor. The council does make an appointment, so if you did those in whichever year, the council switches, makes sense that, you know, for a two-year term, the council is appointing somebody for that same two years. And then in the odd years, the chamber, the mayor, and then the group of the committee appoints one, or the commission, is how it is now, is the way I understand it, so.
All right. Well, we definitely be hoping, getting ahold of you guys, we'll go to a meeting sometime. Any other projects anybody wants to talk about? Seeing none, public participation again?
Kurt Fankhouser again. I just want to clarify what was just said with this 1137 with the Airport Commission. Did the commission bring these concerns to you?
The commission member did.
One commission member did. Okay. Did you guys know about these concerns? They're shaking their head, no. Airport Commission back there shaking their head, no. So the, the way this is set up, if the Airport Commission wants to change something, they're supposed to vote on it themselves first and send it to us in a letter, so, and also the airport manager has to sign off on that letter. So, and this is per the ordinance. So by Fred coming to you himself, he's actually acting rogue. He's actually acting rogue. So I don't know if we first, before we do anything, if maybe you need to talk to the Airport Commission and ask them if they need to send us a letter first?
Kind of what I was exactly doing, asking Mr. Moritz to set up a time to talk to him.
Okay. And...
The ordinance hasn't been updated since 1970.
Did you know anything about this, Mr. Moritz, before tonight?
No.
You're finding it out right now. Okay. That clarifies another question I had. So Tuesday, when this was referred two days ago, I had asked, I said, what's this about? How, why couldn't it have been said then? What exactly it was about? We had, we had all this suspicion and secrecy, and nothing was told to us, and half the Airport Commission is here because they didn't even know this was going on. I just question how we have got to this point with this, is all.
Well, now we're at the point where I am going to meet, and hopefully Zion is too.
I just, I just kind of feel like we got one Airport Commission member that's just totally acting rogue against the will of the board, and we're supposed to be following the will of the board, is all.
Which, again, was essentially why I brought this to this committee, to address it properly.
Okay. And you could have told me a little bit more details than what was said in the Tuesday meeting.
You're not on this committee. I don't believe it's important to tell you.
Ken Long, let you an update on the water?
I just talked to zoning and our law director, and they currently have it in their hands, double, triple checking it, see if there's anything we're missing at all. We're just going to try to get this right last time, not coming up here, have it done, have it not done. I talked to them today at 5:00. It was currently in zoning hands.
Is there a reasonable schedule that we're, that we can follow?
I'm hoping by...
This has been well over...
I know, I know.
If I could, this has been well over a year since this thing started.
We're talking about something that's been on the books. Some of that stuff's been on the books for 61 years.
It's still been a year. Okay, I'm going to, I'll go to my grave on a year. Okay, so I'm just, I'm just asking, when can we expect something to work out?
Yeah, I'm letting you know what they're letting me know, because I'm not in charge of them. It's administrations that want us doing all this. I have nothing to do with it as far as having anything changed or done or modified. I just ask that it be looked at and updated and brung to modern standards.
Then who would I speak to?
Uh, right now, it'd be all right for him to speak to you on that, or, I mean, all you would do is tell him the same thing I'm telling him. It's going to be done. What administration's done.
It's in the administration's hands. They're going to take as long as they take to get it edited and...
So who, who is the administration? So I'm going to the right person. Okay, that's what I thought. You're talking, but they're, they're back here. Okay. So, all right, thank you. Anyone else? Public participation? Seeing none, adjourn at 6:25.
Economic Development Committee, February 6, 2025.
I will call to order Economic Development Committee at 6:26 PM. Members present are Vicky Deschawn, Christopher Moritz, Ciaran Sherrick, and myself, Zion Hickman, Chair. If any public participation for economic development.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. Earlier this evening, I apologize to Mr. Hickman that I was wrong about something, and I told him when I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But however, I want to bring up about the Crawford County partnership. I think, I know that the meeting coming up on the budget, I think we really need to look at this agreement and whether we're getting the bang for our dollars, $50,000, to this partnership, especially when it's in, going not to have a director or even interim director here, hopefully, maybe soon, we don't know. And I'd still like to look at maybe taking some of that money and getting a grant writer for the city, instead of paying $50,000 to them where we could actually use that money for better purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Seeing no one else, move on to the approval of minutes from the January 9, 2025 Regular Economic Development Committee meeting.
I would like to make a combined motion to approve the minutes from both January 9, 2025, and January 23, 2025, regular economic development committee meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Have a combined motion from Ms. Sherrick, a second from Mr. Moritz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Have any open projects we wish to discuss?
I do not.
Seeing none, open public participation one last time. Seeing none, adjourn at 6:29 PM.
Health and Safety Committee, February 6, 2025.
I call the Health and Safety Committee meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, Ciaran Sherrick, James Me, and myself, Vicky Deschawn, as Chair. First, we have public participation. Anyone wishing to speak to the committee, please come to the podium, state your name, your residential address, and then you may begin your talk.
Kurt Fankhouser. And I'm thinking that I'm with the media tonight, so I don't have to state my address.
Kurt, please.
I have a YouTube channel.
Oh, I'm well aware of your YouTube channel.
That does put him as a journalist in accordance to the law.
Okay, not stating my address. Open projects can be discussed right now, and I'm going to bring up the taxi cab insurance. It was pointed out by the law director in his 15-page report two nights ago that there's two types of taxi cab, types of operations. One can be a transportation network, which falls under the state for insurance requirements of, I believe, was it 1.5 million? of, I believe, was it 1.5 million? And then there's the traditional taxi cabs, which we have found out just falls under state minimum coverage. What, I think at this time, I think we need to just totally forget about trying to go above the state minimum coverage for these guys operating in the traditional taxi cab capacity. Let's be honest here, we are a town of 11,000, we're basically just a very large village at this point. We're lucky to have any taxi cab operating within the city limits at all. Now, we have two that I know of, and one of them has been up here quite a bit. And, you know, I'm the type of person that I don't like unnecessary laws, and this ordinance, you know, it's just, it's red tape, it's big government overreach, and personally, I would get in a taxi cab knowing there was no insurance on it. I have no problem doing that. I would ride around in a taxi cab knowing that if I was in an accident, that I'm all on my own. So, that being said, this state minimum coverage, if it's good enough for the state, it's good enough for me. I do not think we need to be going above that, let's just scrap this ordinance, let's get rid of it. If we keep messing around with it, all we're doing is potentially driving out small businesses. Plus, you know, your alternative is not having any taxi cab, and where's that puts you? Walking. Well, guess what? Somebody could run you over on the side of the road, and they might not have insurance. So, if this taxi cab has minimum coverage, that's better than walking on the side of the road, it's good enough for me.
Mr. Myers, I have a question. Just a question. Sure. State minimum coverage, when people hear state minimum coverage, isn't that like $25,000?
For a personal auto policy, yes.
Okay, and were the numbers not different the other night, Mr. Gobrick? $50,000 and $100,000? So that's not $25,000, the state minimum, it's being labeled really poorly right now and making people very confused.
I think the other thing to point out to contradict what Mr. Van Kauzer just said, when you're riding in that taxi, their liability limits don't cover you, that's other drivers on the road is who is covered by that taxi's liability limits.
That was just very misleading, and I did not like that at all.
But we had one of them, gentleman that was up here a couple of weeks ago, stated that he was told, he said he was told by one of the police officers, all he needed was a personal auto policy, which is absolutely incorrect. If he has a claim, the adjuster, the first thing they're going to do is deny the claim because he's operating commercially without commercial insurance. Maybe Mr. Van Kauzer's right, maybe we, it's not our place to get into it.
Well, I thought according to what Brandon read the other night, for the individual old-school taxi, that is where you had to do it locally. Is that what you read?
No, we can, under home rule, because we haven't been preempted from it, like we have with the transportation network.
And all ours was going to say was based on what's required by the state, which was our way of making sure that we did cover that, so I'm not, I'm not exactly sure why.
Right. So it would allow, what we had talked about there tonight would cover exactly what the state's minimum is. And if, like we said, if the state were to change that, we don't have to change ours because it just changes with it.
Yep.
Here's a slide 3635. Just a point for clarification, when you, you are still planning on having the taxi cab license as a taxi cab in Bussaras? Is that the...
That was the plan as of a couple of weeks ago.
So, and then the ordinance would be written that they have to maintain a commercial, they would have to show proof of insured as a commercial? Okay, and I think we pretty well established that nobody in town is going to give them a commercial plan without it being like a million-dollar minimum? Okay.
I believe they could write a commercial policy for a half a million.
Okay, but, so like, it's industry standard to find, hard-pressed to find a pretty low, like 25.5 and 25, right?
Correct.
Or 25.5 and 25.
Yeah, that's not an option on a commercial policy.
Okay, so essentially, like, the industry and the state law is going to have us covered if we write it in such a way that it says that they have to carry a commercial plan or commercial coverage to get the taxi license for Bussaras? Okay, cool. That was all, thanks.
Okay. Now, according to my notes, back on January the 9th, when we had our committee meeting, it was requested that the law director prepare draft legislation for Section 381.04, which is the insurance requirement. And in that draft, you were going to be referencing the state requirement in place of the million-dollar notation. Then, when you gave your law director report Tuesday night, your conclusion came up with, "We can legislate the insurance coverage requirements of taxi cab companies offering traditional services."
Correct. Pursuant to, I think, the put-in-pay case.
Pardon?
Per, pursuant to the, I think it's the put-in-pay case, but yes.
Okay. So... Are, what are we wanting to ask? I mean, you're going to take this 381.04 insurance requirement and just talk about the traditional services offered by taxi cab companies?
Correct, because we're preempted from discussing anything with the transportation networks.
Okay, and I was trying to figure out, in your report, I mean, even with the traditional services, did you have in here what the dollar amounts were?
Yes, we tell them for one passenger, $1,000 for two, and et cetera.
I'd say it should be in there somewhere.
Yeah, you can read those.
It should be 100, 100.
And so you're putting those figures then within the legislation as well?
I think all we really need to do is refer back...
I was going to say, I thought that not to...
Not putting figures in.
Refer back to the state's policy for commercial drivers. That way, if they change it, we don't have to change it.
Well, what's the difference between commercial driver and traditional services?
They're the same thing.
I was going to say, they're the same thing.
Okay.
A traditional taxi doesn't do the Uber, Lyft, all those.
All right. So, what we had requested back on January the 9th remains the same request?
Yep.
It should be, yep.
Okay. So you're gonna, you're working on that since, you know, we asked that on January 9th? Okay. Okay doo. Was there any other public participation? All right, next we'll go to the approval of minutes from the January 23, 2025 Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting. And I will also, before we do that motion, I will let the committee know that at our next Health and Safety Committee meeting, we will have ready the January 9, 25 minutes for approval.
I'll move to approve the January 23 minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Myers, second by Sharick. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next we have our letter from the Bussaras Bratwurst Festival, Inc., concerning the shutdown of the streets during the festival. I personally don't feel it's necessary to read the letter unless the committee members feel. Again, it's the traditional, you know, the festival's going to be held August 14th, 15th, 16th. If I'm reading this right, the 58th Annual Bratwurst Festival will return to the streets of beautiful downtown Bussaras on August 14th through the 16th, 2025. And then again, they're asking for the shutdown of the streets, and they have the list of the streets and the times that they want them closed and air shut down, and a copy of this can be found on documents on demand if someone wishes to, you know, actually know what each street is that's going to be shut down and during which, what time. So, I guess I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion requesting regular legislation, asking for a resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion by Myers, second by Sharick. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Did I say aye before? I forget.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. All right, that's passed. Um, open, oh, well, yes, open projects. One of them being, oh, no, I skipped, I skipped Peddlers and Solicitors Law, Chapter 711. Okay. We've all been given a, uh, copy of the draft. What started out to be a simple, "Let's change the hours that the solicitors, peddlers, or what have you can come," and the days has sort of grown a little larger, but that's because we figured, hey, we're looking at, you know, Chapter 711, let's go ahead and look at everything while we're looking to possibly, you know, change one section of that chapter, let's look at the others. So, I'm assuming everyone's had a chance to look over. Who wants to start first with page one? Does anybody have any changes on that particular page? Where it talks about, you know, Chapter 711, and it has, you know, definitions, the different sections? I do have one change, well, I have several changes. Surprise, surprise, surprise.
You could have led with that.
I wanted to keep you in suspense. Underneath, where it's got the different sections, 711.13, where it says, "Badge to be worn." If you look at the draft that we've been given by the law director, the words "if issued" have been added behind "badge to be worn." He's suggesting that "if issued" be added. Under 71113, are you looking at your draft? Okay?
What's the question?
Well, the fact that, you know, you suggested, and you indicated to us that everything that was highlighted in yellow was additions that, you know, or changes that you had made to... Anything in yellow were additions that you put in the draft, anything in purple you wanted clarification to, and anything in red you took out. So, you have placed under 71113, "if issued," after the words "badge to be worn." So if you're feeling that's an addition, which I guess, we'll decide if we do want that addition, if we do decide, that should also be added on the front where we're talking about the definitions. The definition of "badge to be worn" should be amended to read "badge to be worn if issued."
With, with the sheer number of people that are doing this without coming to the city, should we go ahead and make sure to issue some sort of badge?
I don't see where...
On the front page?
Right here it says "if issued."
Yeah.
On page one, it doesn't say "if issued." She's asking you...
Where does it say on page one?
Well, the very first page where it's your caption.
71113, she wants it to be said.
Oh, they're not in definitions, okay, yes, that should be changed, that should be changed to "add if issued."
But, but should we make that an option to issue? Or should we be sending out badges so that these people can't claim to have been up here and not have proof?
That's up to you guys. Apparently, nobody's getting badges.
They just get a paper permit, correct?
Correct. If they stop by and ask for one.
When's the last time you gave a badge out?
I believe that Lieutenant Burgesby issues some type of a badge for it.
So they are doing that currently? Okay.
I think it should not only be a badge, but some bright colored piece of paper. Because we've got a lot of people peddling around town that are not supposed to be peddling around town at crazy hours.
So we're feeling then, "badge to be worn, period." And we don't want "if issued" in there? Because that leaves it up to...
Correct.
Okay. All right. So then, you are one addition of "if issued," we're going to strike and not do that, under 711.13, and then we can forget my comment of adding it to page one because we didn't add it back in the back. Okay. Um, the caption. The caption says, "An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7." That should be Chapter 711. So 7 should be removed and then insert the numbers 711. Of the Bussaras city ordinances, I think we want to delete "city" and say "Bussaras codified ordinances." And then it goes on to say, "Entitled Peddlers and Solicitors Law." Under Part 7, "Entitled Business," that's a typographical error there. Then, when you come down to Section 1, it says that Chapter 711, "Entitled Temporary Business." Well, temporary business should be stricken because Chapter 711 is entitled Peddlers and Solicitors Law. And you'll see, that's what's mentioned up in the caption part. And then we continue on and say, "Under Part 7, Entitled Peddlers and Solicitors Law." And that is to say, Part 7 is "Business Regulation Code." So you want to delete Peddlers and Solicitors Law and insert the "Business Regulation Code." Okay. The next question that I have, Mr. Gobrick, is, I've gone back and looked at other drafts that have been done and where, you know, you've, like, made changes, like additions, but they're not on this draft that's in our documents on demand and that was provided to us, this latest one. It does not have highlighted the words in yellow that you had highlighted before on your other drafts. And I'm just concerned that, you know, somebody picks this up, I mean, they're not going to know that here's what these changes are. I mean, if I would look at this, I wouldn't see any changes on this particular section, but there have been changes because I compared this to the original that we already have in existence, and, do you understand what I'm saying? Am I not?
No. No.
Okay, in other words, when you do a draft, we've always highlighted, just as you indicated, everything you had in red was to be stricken out, everything that you had in yellow meant you wanted it added to the ordinance, and everything you had in purple, you had or wanted clarification on. Well, if you look at what you gave us, you have made additions, but they're not highlighted in yellow. So I, I'm just concerned that they're not highlighted in yellow, so people aren't gonna know their additions. And I mean, isn't that how you typically have been doing your drafts?
Yes.
So that it jumps out at us, so that we know.
I don't know where the highlights went.
Pardon?
I don't know where the highlights went.
Okay.
Table that, let everybody get back on the same page?
Table the whole.
Yeah, that way he can get his most recent draft.
And if you have other corrections?
I was gonna say, this is the most recent draft.
Yeah, that is the most recent, yeah.
She was saying there were things that weren't on it.
Well, that's, that, yes, that's what I'm saying. The most recent draft that we've been provided do not reflect the changes or additions highlighted in yellow, like they had previously.
I think the confusion is that it does reflect them, it's just not highlighted. Is that?
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yes, the changes are in here, but they're not highlighted in yellow, so people know that, hey, this is a change. People such as us. You know, so that we know that that's something that you suggested be a change.
Sure. Like I said, I don't know where the highlights went.
Okay, so, we can do that, as Mr. Myers suggested. You wanna go back and look at your draft and highlight in yellow? I mean, I've already done mine, so I know, but.
Well, great, why don't you send me a copy?
I can do that.
I would say, did you have other changes on it? I'd say, yeah, send him the copy.
Well, yeah. But I, I think we still, and, and the reason I wanna discuss this tonight is, we've had this on our open projects for a while. Um, it started out with, again, constituents were concerned about the times of canvassing. And then again, we suggested, well, hey, you know, we're already making a change to this section, while you're at it, look at the whole chapter. Well, last week or a week before, there were a number of comments on Facebook, because I think it was Bright Speed that was coming around, and people were very upset about the doorbell ringing, and, you know, were questioning about, you know, why are they allowed to, you know, solicit these hours? And I was hoping that we would be able to talk about this tonight, get it, you know, approved or whatever, and get it presented to council for possible passage. My other thing that I was thinking on, and we all know that I'm one who, you know, when it comes to emergency legislation, I don't care for emergency legislation unless it's a necessity. And this was one that we were typically not going to do as an emergency, but in looking at all these Facebook posts, I'm wondering, especially for this time, the bit of canvassing, that this, and, and I did in my Facebook, because I did respond to that, to the post, to let the people know that this is in committee, this is what we're doing, duh duh this, duh duh that, and that it's, right now, not as an emergency, but that I would bring it up to the committee to see what their thoughts were of maybe making this an emergency, so that, you know, it could be passed and approved right then. But, there's a lot of other changes. I had a conversation with, um, the police chief today. Because there was question about, you were wanting some clarification on who's issuing the permits. It said in here, the service safety director. You indicated, well, in the first place, the police chief's the one that issues the permits, so why then are we allowing the revocation of a permit to be the responsibility of the service safety director? So to make a long story short, Mr. Ossenheimer, or Chief Ossenheimer, suggested that possibly the only, um, time that the police department deals with the solicitors, peddlers, and what have you, is when they are asked by the administration to do a background check.
Okay.
And, uh, Mr. Ossenheimer, or Chief Ossenheimer said, you know, hey, it would be great if, you know, maybe if either the zoning office would be the one that an individual would go to pick up their application, you know, for a permit, because that's where people go for other permits. That the application would be there, the individual would take the application home, fill everything out, attach what they need to, then it's brought back to either the zoning office, or maybe the service safety director office. Those were just suggestions that Chief Ossenheimer made. And then, once the application's been completed and given back to the proper department where the individual secured it, then that department then would give everything to the police department, they would do their background check. And then they would stamp their approval of, yes, the background check is great, this person could, you know, have their permit or their license, because there's times where they get permits, times where they get license. I've talked with both the zoning office, and I spoke with, uh, Mr. Starner today, and from what I'm gathering, that, that appears to be doable. The one question was, the police department, they take the pictures, and they're the ones that have the machine down there, you know, to take the picture that goes on your badge or what have you. Um, that might just be some little internal things to.
Say, well, should we do it like we do how many other things, and say the city service safety director or authorized agent, so that way, they go up there and he's like, oh, that's one of those that you go here, that's where you go here?
Yep.
Because that way, that wording covers it?
Yeah, or they're designated, yeah, designee or what have you. Um, so again, that was a suggestion by the police chief. I don't know what the, how the committee feels about that.
I guess my only question is, like Spectrum, they're such a big company, they may send 10 people to this area. So all 10 people's gonna have to take this home and fill out this application and come back.
Well, they would have to do it.
On an individual basis, Spectrum just couldn't do a blanket, say.
Well, no, I think the whole purpose was, the reason they do a background check is for the person who's coming to your door, not the company.
Yeah.
Okay. Works for me if that's what we would do.
So what we're looking at then is, we'll indicate service safety director or his designee, that's where people will get their applications from, that's where they will return their application to, back to after they've completed it. Service safety director, whatever department, will then take it down to the police department for their background check. And then I assume, I mean, why couldn't we, once the police department has done a background check, I mean, could there be contact by, well, I guess, you know, the?
Yeah, they can just.
They've gotta come up and pick up their badge and what have you, so they'll just have to go downstairs. I don't know, when they do the badges, do they do them like right then, or?
Yeah, once they turn in the background checks, once you get that done, then they come back, they'll issue their badge, once they're approved.
Okay.
So from start to finish, days, hours?
Days.
Okay.
Kind of depending on how many dispatch you've got, and give them room, and like I said, Lieutenant Burgeby does all the badges, so if he's not working, they gotta come back when he's working.
Okay. So basically, the police department's responsibility will be background checks and badge, picture taking, issuing of the badges, or, and everything else will be service safety director's office or his designee.
Can I make a suggestion, remember, please, while? So, I was brought to my attention, under 71 dot 12, applicant to file bond, that we have not been doing that, and when I checked with the police department, they said that they, you know, don't really send people up to our office to do that, and then it's a $10,000 bond for anyone outside of the state, that they, and they have to show it to the auditor's office, and then it has to be found agreeable, I believe, to the law director's office.
Right, mhm.
So I don't have a prob, currently, we're not doing that. I don't have a problem instituting that. This is something that administration's going to take over or have the zoning department do. Could we put like a cover letter or sheet of the steps of what they need, so we can say they have all the information, they need to do this, then this, then this, so they have a very organized.
Check it off as they do it?
Yes. And we're not, not giving them the information, and they're not sending people in to get a permit and going, well, we're supposed to be working tomorrow, you know?
That was, excuse me.
What's the, the purpose of the bond in that instance? Is it to protect your property if they damage your property and they come on?
I would assume so.
I guess in my head, I'm thinking back in the, the 70s, when a guy would come and he'd open your door, dump a cup of dirt on your floor, and then try to suck it up with a Kirby.
Well, according to the ordinance, under Section 711.12, applicant to file bond, and this was, uh, Mr. Goberic, where you had commented, does anyone enforce this? And that's where I talked with the, with the police department, and it's like. But, the reason for the bond is, according to the ordinance, the bond, well, let's see, the bond shall further guarantee to any citizen of the city that all money paid as a down payment shall be accounted for and applied according to the representations to the solicitor, and that the property purchased shall be accounted for according to the representations of the solicitor. An action on the bond may be brought in the name of the city for the use or benefit of an aggrieved person. I was looking to see, because it says the bond shall further guarantee, so that means there must be another guarantee.
And if they're working for a larger company, that company can have a, a single bond, it doesn't have to be per employee.
It still would have to be brought up to the ordinance there.
I just give a little understanding of where, why I'm saying this. One day, we had a group of, this was fairly recently, a group of people downstairs trying to get solicitor permits that day, didn't have a bond, and I'm trying to call the gentleman on the phone, saying, hey, you know, we're trying to follow what our rules are, and have these bonds in place, and he's, so then he's kind of panicking, going, okay, well, all my people are there, they're ready to go out, they want paid, you know? So how, if we could just make it very clear that if you're coming in to get this, this is exactly what we need, and you need to be able to provide this to us, and you don't have any excuse for not having these, sending your people in, you as a company should know, you know?
Yeah, check sheet would be very good.
Okay, I think. That's, that's really it. I mean, the highlighting, so we all know.
So the check sheet's gonna be attached to the legislation?
Excuse me?
The check sheet's gonna be attached to the legislation.
I disagree with that, because that can change.
Well, I don't know, that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Maybe have something in the legislation saying that there will be a checklist?
That's more of an administrative function, I think.
Okay, so who's gonna make it out? I guess.
That's the only thing that I can see on here, yeah. So do you have any questions, Mr. Goberic, on?
I don't have any questions.
Other than you want me to send?
A copy.
I can do that. All right, so then hopefully.
So we, are we changing this to be as an emergency?
Oh, yeah.
For passage? Is there a way to do that?
I was gonna say, it would have to be re-referred.
No?
No.
No, because it's already referred.
They don't refer as emergency or non-emergency.
No, they're just referred.
They get requested by the committee.
Yeah, they get requested, oh, yeah, okay.
So I guess, what, what does the committee think about it being an emergency? And again, the main purpose is that the soliciting hours.
And the fact that it's becoming an issue quite quickly.
And summer's right around.
I know.
Yeah, it's gonna be a bigger issue. Yeah, I have no problems with passing it as an emergency.
And, just shared with me here, because I think, oh, yes, there was one. Um, if you look under, Section 711.05, I, hours of operation. This is just a question I have. This has to do with interstate commerce, religious and charitable organizations, permit requirement, and all that good stuff. Under I, it says hours of operation. It says, "No person shall sell or offer for sale any candy, ice cream confection, or any food or beverage for human consumption from any motor vehicle, vehicle, or cart of any kind, on any public street, sidewalk, or public area in the city, except between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. daily." Now, is, is that where, I mean, that's about where someone's coming to your house and?
That's the ice cream truck.
Well, yeah.
It's the ice cream truck.
But it says in any public area, which means during the festival, it doesn't close until 11 o'clock?
Yeah.
Um, during the car nights, the, I mean, it shouldn't say, it should say, unless.
Yeah, does, does this pertain to?
Yeah.
I don't think it pertains to fixed locations. I think it pertains to, the whole purpose of this whole chapter is coming into the neighborhoods.
It says, "Or public area in the city."
Right, but, now, I, I didn't write this.
Right, I didn't.
But, uh, what I think the intent, I think what Kevin's saying is, the intent is very clearly that someone dragging a vacuum cleaner behind their, in a car going door to door is basically the same thing as somebody who's driving a hot dog truck or driving a, uh, ice cream truck. The same thing, they're still peddling goods.
But they've also allowed the ice cream truck to sell during those late night, under the lights.
The whole thing, I mean, bringing it to you, not you going, if the ice cream truck is parked at the art park, that's not, that's not.
But if it, if it comes through the soccer game or the baseball fields, because there's late night games, that's after those hours too, though. So I mean, would there be a way to, just put something at the end saying, unless, unless authorized?
I was gonna say, we can put that change in, but I don't think any reasonable court would possibly read it that way.
No reasonable court would possibly read it that way?
Right.
So if we gave them permission to sell going through the park, because there's something big going on, they would still not have permission?
I'm saying we can put it in there, but I think that, I don't think a reasonable court would say that this particular piece of legislation stops the ice cream truck from going to a soccer game.
But these.
We can put it in there.
Excuse me. These hours of 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., that's not these people going to your home.
Right.
Is, is it, or I'm asking that question? Because it says, "From any motor vehicle, vehicle, or cart of any kind on any public street, sidewalk, or public area." So that's.
Ice cream truck.
Yeah.
Yeah, or the swan guy.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the swan guy comes to your...
Well, yeah, he comes to your home, though, yeah. Doesn't he?
Mm-hmm.
I think, yeah.
Didn't they go bankrupt?
Mm-hmm.
We don't have to worry about that.
I don't.
I just want to make sure that these hours of operation from 9:00 to 9:00 isn't affecting the people in their homes, where someone's gonna be coming and ringing their doorbell, because...
Now, it gets the music on the ice cream truck's the issue of that.
Of course, everybody loves that, right?
In your head, you can't get it out.
I just don't want that particular section to knock out the main reason that we were changing this. And it does say, any person to go upon any premises and ring the doorbell.
Yeah, for the other part, it does.
For the other.
And this just says, no person shall sell or offer, no person, shall sell or offer any candy, ice cream confection, or food or beverage for human consumption from any motor vehicle, vehicle, or cart of any kind, on any public street, sidewalk, or public area in the city, except between these hours. So, again, that's very extreme, as no person. It doesn't say, not when you have a baseball game, not when you have a festival, it's no person ever. Just putting that out there. That is pretty extreme.
And it does say doorbell, because I don't have one.
Pardon?
I don't have a doorbell, sorry.
Oh, okay. So are we wanting to do anything with that, or not?
I think Kurt wants to speak.
No, Kurt can wait. You could talk in a few seconds. Do you have something specific about this particular section?
Is that a commission?
Yes, yes, yes.
Kurt Van Kauzer again. Is this going to the doors and ringing the doorbell and stuff? Are you considering, like, the Jehovah Witnesses come to your door? Are you considering that with this?
Are they considered peddlers now when they're not selling something?
Okay, because I believe...
What are we gonna do with the scouts?
What about them?
Scouts go door to door.
Selling cookies, or selling things?
Very rare that they actually go door to door anymore, so this is...
Hey, I was district, I was the highest district seller in the scouts for like two years.
I believe there may be a United States Supreme Court ruling related to when people come to your door and knock about religious type things. I don't think we can regulate that.
I don't think it falls under it, because it's not selling something.
Right, there wouldn't be...
I, I just wanted to make it clear in case, because if somebody does get their door knocked on and it is that, are they gonna come back and say, well, we, I thought city council restricted that? But I don't think we can restrict anything with the religious stuff.
The girl scouts aren't solicitors? Because I'm getting cookies, I don't care if it's eight o'clock.
Oh, they don't, they don't come knocking usually at 10 o'clock. It's usually, hey, does your kid still sell cookies? Do you have any...
Well, yeah, that's, that's the way now, but there's still people knocking on doors, so, especially if it's in their neighborhood.
Yeah, but they're not, they're not even supposed to, like, in their roles, like, with the scouts and stuff, they're not supposed to be out after dark because of safety concerns for the kids now. Like, they, they get...
On the way to school.
Unless, unless I know you, my kid's not coming over by your house after dark to drive off cookies. And my kid was on the top sales, so just putting that out there.
Clarissa Slater, 3645 St. Row 4. I think the concern is that they're technically sales. Are we wanting to do like a minor exemption?
We can pick this thing apart, you know?
I just don't want some old, not to say old person, but usually it's an old person, like, get off my lawn kind of person, like, calling the cops on kids because they're selling door to door, and then they get in trouble.
Well, to this main point, are you gonna force, are you gonna force the little girl scout to get a bond?
That's what I'm saying. Should be like a minor exemption.
At that point, we should probably trust the police department not to be stupid.
I don't think they're gonna arrest anybody, any kids for a lemonade stand.
I don't think so either.
They just tax two boxes of cookies, right?
And my other thing about the, you could use like some sort of verbiage where you're saying like ambulate, so you're, for the vehicles. So you're saying that they're going through residential areas instead of being just like kind of one place. That way, you're not accidentally hitting food trucks or something, since it seems to have such stark language. Just a thought.
I think the intention of that part, though, was to not have the ice cream truck music at 11 o'clock at night.
Right, yeah, so you could say like they're not ambulating through residential areas. I think it should be like 8:00 o'clock anyway. I think 11:00 or whatever it was, was too late. I can't remember.
Nine, was nine.
Nine, I think, eight or seven, I mean...
Yeah, but there's something about during the summer, your kids...
Yeah, I mean, eight's probably okay, but nine's kind of like, you know?
Okay, so where are we?
We were handing your stuff to, and, and having to prepare it as an emergency for us to look at for the next time, as long as it's ready to go, we can get it out and into the full council. That was kind of the consensus previously.
Sounds great, Aaron.
I love you.
Took you two seconds to say what takes me 30 minutes. Sorry. Anybody have anything else on chapter 7.11?
No.
All right, I'll send my email with a copy, and then you'll do your thing and have it ready for our next committee meeting?
Sure.
The appointment, this, well, this is under open projects. The appointment of Ron Boers, Floyd Farmer, and Steve Pfeifer to the property maintenance appeals board for a four-year term. Mr. Pfeifer has been contacted. According to Miranda, Mr. Pfeifer does wish to be reappointed. I spoke with Mr. Boers last night. He does not wish to continue on, so we will need to get someone to replace Mr. Boers. I spoke with Mr. Farmer this afternoon, and he's indicated that if there is somebody else out there that would like to do it, he's more than happy to step back and let somebody else be on the board. However, if there isn't anybody out there, he will be happy to accept a reappointment for another So I'm not sure, do we do sort of like, we were looking for people to be on your...
Bad hoc committee.
Yeah, you're, yeah.
Put it out.
Pardon?
I said, just put it out there.
Okay. So do we have Miranda do her little...
Magic.
Yeah. Anybody interested?
Go for it.
And like I say, I've been trying to find, in our codified ordinances, the property maintenance appeals board, how they're established, how they're appointed. Does it just somebody say, I want to be on it? And I, I'm not finding anything in here, so...
Miranda, could you add the pay scale of that, please?
Zero to zero?
Zero to zero.
Zero dollars and zero cents.
Okay. So Miranda, you'll take care of that for us?
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other open projects we want to talk about? Okay, then I will end our health and safety...
Wait, public participation.
Oh, public participation, excuse me.
Have a look, we have some...
Kurt Van Kauzer. Brandon, how does the no soliciting signs affect if somebody has one of them on their door?
Uh, that's in there.
Yeah.
Oh, it's in our ordinance?
Yeah.
But can they be charged with trespassing if somebody does continue to try to knock with the sign on there, or?
It would depend on where, like, that's not, that's more of a fact-specific pattern, because then you're looking in, is it, is it conspicuously posted? Is there a light? Did they see it? I don't think so. I would be dubious about prosecuting one of those. But, I mean, we prosecute dumb stuff in this county all the time, so...
So essentially, a no soliciting sign is a please don't ring my doorbell?
Yeah. That was all.
I was gonna say, it used to be a trespass.
Trespass if they refuse to leave.
Okay. Any other public participation? See, no one. Now I will adjourn the health and safety committee meeting at 7:22 p.m.
Public lands and buildings committee, February 6, 2025.
I'm calling public lands and buildings to order at 7:28 p.m. Members present are Christopher Moritz, Kevin Myers, and myself. Ciaran shared chair, Mr. Hickman had to leave this evening. First on the agenda, we have public participation.
Kurt Van Kauzer. I want to talk about something that's in open projects. Since we're all about transparency and all that, cameras at the parks. It's been extensively discussed, and I think it needs to be, I'm, I'm concerned about security right now. One, because there is no security at the parks anymore. Now, there has been some people...
Can you watch how you say things, so she don't create issues with security, please?
Which is transparency.
Transparency is not purposely creating issues. So if you're going to purposely create things, you can stop talking about them. If you're gonna attack, you can stop talking about them. On that, spit it out quickly, please, and, and give us what your issue is. We're about creating more of an issue.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting to it, let me get to it. Now, law director informed me that certain things are not public record. Like, I talked about getting a public record request for some security-related infrastructure stuff, and the law director appropriately told me that that is considered an infrastructure security record, and it's not releasable under the Public Records Act. Now, that being said, council members still could be privy to that. And in that scenario, the appropriate setting would be an executive session setting. And when we all took, take office, we sign a, a thing that says we won't release security information to the public. So I think that, you know, everybody wanted these cameras to be discussed in an open public meeting. That's why I was walking out of these meetings, because I don't believe that was appropriate. I believe that was an infrastructure security issue and should not have been discussed in an open public meeting. I did bring that up with past law director, Brian. He sort, he was agreeing with that, and then he left us very quickly, and I don't recall exactly if I had brought it up with you or not, Brandon. But I'd like to get back to where we can possibly make sure we have security in some of these places. And also, there was some people from the public that were coming up here saying, oh, I'll donate money, I'll donate money, I'll donate this, I'll donate that. Do we know, has any money been donated yet towards the security cameras?
The cameras, I have not seen any.
Okay, so does that mean that all them people was just coming up and blowing smoke? I kind of tend to think they were. But if we could possibly get back to maybe having an executive session meeting to discuss security-related things, I think we should maybe go down that road. Because there, there was some comments on the Facebook page tonight of, during the meeting, somebody was talking about spray paint. Okay, I have screenshotted it. It's one of them fake accounts that somebody's got, but I may be turning it over to the police.
Bruce Trucca, 1100 Linden Avenue, here. Good evening, members of council. I address you tonight to formally present a proposal for donating the old YMCA property at 233 East Manso Street. This proposal is not a finalized plan, but rather a scenario for the consideration, one of many possible paths forward as we look to the future of emergency services, infrastructure. We understand that the city is in a financial crisis, and long-term investments must be weighed carefully. However, we also have to plan as the current firehouse's useful life is numbered, and emergency services must be prepared for, for the future. The urgency of this situation cannot be overstated, and we must act now to ensure the safety and well-being of our citizens. Tonight, I ask for council's vote to accept the property donation. The old YMCA building is, sits adjacent to the current firehouse at 223 East Manso Street, making it a strategic location for future public safety improvements. While the building is not viable for use, the land offers potential for short-term situations, solutions, and long-term city planning. Key development opportunities under this proposal include possibly demolishing, demolishing the old YMCA building for, to, for, to clear the site for future city use, exploring the fire department EMS, EMS potential, expansion for, for integrating nearby properties. There are properties that surround this, this other, this property that possibly in the future The current firehouse is too small to meet long-term operational needs. The donation would be the first step in creating space for emergency services. The current firehouse, I went ahead and had a certified asbestos mitigation specialist come, and they currently evaluated the old YMCA building. The results are now, are now available. Historical materials from the YMCA could possibly be stored and repurposed for the future. Tonight, I'm asking the city council to vote to accept the donation of the old YMCA property. This would give the city full control over the site and allow careful planning regarding public safety infrastructure. I recognize the city is facing financial challenges, and every decision must be carefully evaluated. However, we do not plan for the future. We risk falling behind on essential public safety infrastructure. The firehouse will not last forever, and by taking action now, we can ensure that U.S. Congress is prepared for the future, next generation of emergency services. Thank you for your time. I have three different reports... three different reports that I'd like to pass out.
Do you have one more for Kevin?
Yes, when I get over there. I'm going. And this is the, this is the asbestos report? I had a, I had an asbestos person. He came, and they walked through the building. They evaluated the building. They took pictures of where all the asbestos is located. And then they also are certified as asbestos person company that can actually remove it. As well as, as far as the demoing of the building, they also provide a cost estimate of what it would cost to demo the building as well. Doesn't necessarily mean that you have to demo the building. At the present time, it can set empty. The previous owner had put a, a new rubber roof on it, and so it does have a new rubber roof. So it is a dry, a dry structure. I currently have electricity on, and I currently have natural gas heat. That doesn't necessarily mean you have to heat it, though. I'm just trying to preserve it for, for the time being. All right, thank you.
Any more public participation? All right, seeing none. Next on the agenda would be the approval of minutes from the summer 19th. We also have January 9th and January 23rd.
I'll make a motion to approve all three collectively.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Myers.
Check it.
A second from Mr. Moritz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next on the agenda is sale of public lands and city property.
Aaron, if I could ask, Colin, on the list that you have there, 1 through 5 of the farmland for the bids, we were talking about the potential selling, or what we could get for selling. Would you be able to check, I know like number 1 and number 5 on your list, check with, I think, would be the water department, number 2, check with the wastewater plant, to see if, how that would impact them if we were to sell the land around their facilities? It's my understanding that the ones around the airport was purchased with FAA funds, similar to the, the one that was purchased from the Schreiners. We would have to donate any profits back to the FAA, I believe. And also, that, I think that ties our hands. I, I wouldn't be in favor of getting rid of the stuff around the airports, what I'm saying. So the ones around the water, plant, the reservoirs, and the wastewater treatment plant, I would like to just have you check with those people to see if it's advantageous for us to consider selling them or not.
And the wastewater.
Wastewater treatment plant, can we hold off until we?
I was kind of thinking that, but I was gonna let you say that.
Till we get our final, 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 right.
So number 1 and number 5 would be the two at this moment.
Yes, sir.
So that's all we had on that for this evening, was just find out.
Well, do we have an update on the other ones that have already been listed?
The only two we have listed right now are the ones around Wendy's, and we do have one bid on one of those apparently. And we've talked to Wendy's themselves also, corporate. We should be able to get the North End Fire Station out hopefully next week.
Did you ask him, Mr. Myers?
So these are farmlands, right? These are income lands?
Yeah, I had, I got a report from the auditor that had said what we bring in on them annually. So looking at the next 30 years' projection. What we were bringing in. So like in 2024, the one on Keese Road, which is 7.6 acres, we brought in $1,900. The 21.9 acres on Stairout 98 by Reservoir 4 was $5,400. The wastewater treatment plant, 7 acres, was $650 bucks.
So.
And we, and that was one of the things that we talked about several meetings ago, that, you know, the $400,000 that we need for a roof on this building could be set off by, offset by potentially looking at selling some of the property.
So. Well, I didn't think about it before, but wouldn't it, I think solar panels or something like that would generate more income for the properties, because that's something we could look into, or, I mean?
We, we should look into everything. My personal feelings are, why would you destroy farmland that's being farmed for our food production? I mean, that's, I don't think that's good use of, of land. I would much rather sell it.
The only way I would do it is to be generating more income for the city.
Yeah, I think you're right. You're gonna get on that over a long term. My, my, my personal feeling is your rent, you're gonna get on that long term is not gonna be near as what it would if we could sell it and utilize that money for a need we have now.
Okay, just a thought. Would anybody be opposed, for me, just to make a few phone calls and see what?
No, that's why I was wanting to start the conversation and ask.
An acre of land for solar?
I was gonna say, the problem that is, they were not looking at an acre. They were looking at larger parcels. Which we do have the one, but it's by the runway, and I don't know how that would affect over that direction.
I would assume the FAA would not want reflective solar panels. Mr. Keever shaking his head no, so.
No, you're wrong, man. The big acreage to the west of the runway would be suitable. They did the same thing over a lineup.
Okay.
Okay.
They put reflective panels on it, if they want it. If they don't want it, I know they're looking at other places in the community.
Mr. Myers, if you're gonna make those inquiry phone calls, I would also ask you to find out, do they require a certain length of time? Like, will they only sign a 30-year deal? Or will they do something shorter?
I just don't want to be the only one calling because there's so many out there.
Right.
Getting on Facebook and finding out.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. I want to applaud the mayor for donating the YMCA to the city. I think that the city count, the city, this committee, first of all, needs to accept that proposal. And I think it needs to be approved by council to accept that. And if you want to vote no for it, that's your decision. Second thing is, is my understanding, talking to Kevin Cotray, is that some of the airport land was bought with FFA money, or, yeah. Yeah. And that some of that money from that grant would only have to be, that portion of that money that was borrowed would only have to be returned to them. The rest of it would be pure profit for the city.
Large amount, small amount? No, no?
I can get with him tomorrow, but I think he said $4,000 an acre is what they bought that for, with the grant money. So anything that the grant money bought, if the, depends on the terms of the contract or with the agreement.
Did you remember how many acres that was?
No, he didn't really know, and I can get with him tomorrow. But on the sheets here, and I was kind of curious, is like, even for 10 years, at the current rates, we're looking at only making in 10 years, 300,000 dollars in 10 years. Okay? To me, I mean, if we decide to sell that land out there, if it, I applaud Jimmy, because I've talked about solar panels before with you, is that we ought to be looking into that with possibly AEP or whatever, because I've brought this up before as a suggestion, that maybe we could get a reduced rate on the city utilities for street lights and for the government buildings. Shelby does that now. So there are options out there. The second thing is, is I think that if we don't need land, and looking at the total list on this, I think there's some other land that we really need to look at, too, of getting rid of. You know, like, the old waste, the old water tower plant. Let's get out there and get that done, and get the pipes disconnected so we can sell that land so we don't have to spend money to mow that all the time. The other question I had, too, in applauding Vicky Deschawn about this, too, was do we know if this is the true acreage of these, because of the airport expansion, runways and taxiways out there? Do we have a definite number of what the acreage is out there? And when was it last surveyed since those improvements were made at the airport? I, I applaud her for bringing that up, because I think, I agree with her that if you're going out for bid, you have to know the total acreage that you're putting in a contract. Thank you.
The water filtration plant, do we have a large electric bill out there? Everything's run mostly on electric? And so we do have extra land out there that could utilize to offset the electric bill? Cool, thank you.
Kurt Van Khauser. Echoing what previous speakers have said with, in regards to the, some of the land of, around the water treatment plant being possibly usable for solar. So there's two high-consuming metered services near the water treatment plant on Beach Grove Road. There is the, the plant itself, and then the pump down by the river that only gets run a couple months of the year when they're filling the reservoir. There was some talk at one point about a company coming in and making a deal with us, where they hooked on to our two services there, and they supplied the solar panels. And basically, there was a net metering agreement with the solar that they made all the investment in. We didn't have to pay for anything. We potentially got a cheaper rate on our electric bill. And basically, they were, they were taking advantage of the net metering of the money that we would normally be paying the electric company. And then they were sending us a bill instead at a negotiated lower rate. Now, is there any update to that company? Are they still looking at doing that?
Well, we're currently negotiating right now, so, but I can't, I don't want to say any more than that right now.
Okay, the, the other scenario is we ourselves could just bypass that company, and we could install our own solar directly tied into those two loads. And we would essentially lower the bill of the two, the pump station and the water plant itself. Personally, I think that would be the most advantageous for the city. We would cut out that middleman company. And there, there has to be a grant out there that can buy these solar panels for us. There has to be. I mean, it's, we're a government entity. You know, so I, I would maybe consider those two areas last, because if you do that, if you do something with the solar near the water treatment plant, you're definitely going to need the ground space that is there with that acreage. And then in regards to around the airport, so the same company a year ago was identifying large industrial loads that were privately owned. And there's a couple still operating out there in the south end of town. You got Blades and Polytech. They were potentially looking to do the same thing with those properties. But in that scenario, they would need ground space, and the airport was the only thing closest. So you know, I would maybe hold on to the Beach Grove Road stuff and that airport, kind of deprioritize that. Maybe your list of properties for sale, identify things other than those that we could essentially do without before those, because once you get rid of those, you pretty much throw your opportunity at the solar away. That's all in my suggestion.
And we own a lot more acreage around those facilities. This list was just tillable acreage that were written right now.
This is the farmland bid list that I was talking about, just so you know.
I'm talking sale of public lands and city property here.
Yeah, my, my question was only on tillable.
The ones that you brought up that you said that you guys were talking about are the farmland bid.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Hi. Vicky Deschawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. In response to Mr. White's comment on the acreage, on the farmland bids, I did receive tonight from Kevin Cotray the acreage pertaining to the airport area. Because, you know, my concern on that was that there's going to be acreage taken out if we do decide to not lease that for farmland, but allow the, right. And so he gave this information. He received it from the USDA, Crawford County, Ohio. And then he also had their, Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly also did a map as well. And he left those for me, which I will then turn over to Tommy, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Now, as far as the other land, like, you know, Keese Road and that, I don't think there's an issue with those. I think the concern was with, you know, the airport, and so, thank you.
Well, we just cut into it in five different ways.
Exactly, yes, thank you.
So then on this list, the spreadsheet, the ones that are in red that say can be sold or needs to be sold, are we to a point that you are ready to move forward with this? Would it, would it be okay to ask for draft legislation and have you get with him to, to go over this list, the ones that, like, there's some that says there might be selling restrictions. Obviously, if there's an issue, leave it off. But there's plenty that say could be sold, should be sold, needs to be sold. Yeah.
Right, so, so would, I would entertain a motion to request draft legislation be brought in with whatever Tommy thinks is fit for the next meeting?
So moved.
Okay, so I have a motion from Mr. Myers. Do I have a second from anybody?
I guess it'd be me.
Oh, hey, a second from Mr. Moritz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're gonna get draft legis- Okay, so, we're gonna get draft legislation on whatever Tommy is ready, what they're ready for, to be brought in as soon as possible.
So, that's legislation to sell it?
Yes, the legislation to sell the land that they were looking at selling. He's got some in red that he's.
All the stuff that we're paying to mow the lawns right now.
Gotcha.
So, he, he's gonna get you the, the things, and then you can do the legislation, you can bring it to us.
List in our package tonight, all the ones in red.
We have one of these lots in the north, and a fire station already.
I was gonna say, we already got those.
It's just these other couple.
So, now where the farmland bids, would it be prudent to find out for some of this farmland if we needed to, see if it needed to be used for solar prior to?
Yeah, I'd like to hold off and let us do all that checking, and, you know, I don't think we're under high pressure to.
All right, so, anybody want to talk about any other open projects?
Aye. Is the donation of the YMCA on open projects at this time? I believe it is. I would like to.
I wasn't sure if it was left on open projects or not. I haven't looked at the new paperwork though.
Is it still open? Do you know?
It is.
It's still open projects? I'd like to see if we can have that brung up in our next Public Lands and Buildings meeting?
So, for, for our next Public Lands and Buildings meeting, we definitely want that to be on the agenda, please.
Thank you. Gives us time to look at this stuff?
Yeah, that's a big point of the papers. All right, anything else? Okay, public participation? Seriously.
Clarissa? I'm not gonna lie, that kinda scared me for a minute, heard someone run up behind me.
I know.
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4. I don't know how I ended up, probably because I'm running for office, but I had an individual, I know can be a slippery slope to think of it this way, but there is a group of individuals who live on Stetser, who said when the pines reservoir was breached, it dried out a creek bed there that was feeding into the reservoir, and a group of residents in that area were wanting to purchase small parcels off of the pines, and I know it wouldn't affect the property as a whole, but they said that they were willing to, they are very interested in purchasing it, so it wouldn't be the whole pines, we wouldn't lose the pines, but there's a section where basically it slopes, and there's not really any way that they could be developed or used, other than from the, from the south side, I guess, of the, of the pines. So, they're wanting to purchase it for their own use.
Hey, guys, can you just stay quiet, because I'm hearing more of you than I am Clarissa, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I can talk louder. That was one point, and then the other one is that net metering has been something that was discussed before with Kurt, so I had taken the time to look up some of the concerns I had about it. I know that we are able to contract for net metering. My only concern is, because I was looking at this myself, is that we may turn ourselves into a electric works, if we purchase and operate our own electrical, or our own solar panels. Since we'd be generating without a contract with an actual provider, we would be our own provider, that's my only concern, is that we would then turn into an electric, an electric fund would have to be found, and that we'd have another enterprise fund, so that was, would be my only concern, is that we find out the legalities of purchasing and becoming our own provider, essentially.
I believe also, because if there, if there's an overrun of electricity more than you need, that has to go back to the grid.
Correct, if you're in a net metering contract.
Right.
But, if you're not contracting with anyone, you can't contract with yourself, so you'd be generating your own electricity.
Right, but electricity's gotta go somewhere if it's not used, back into storage cells, batteries, or dissipate into the ground?
Right.
Or something like that.
So, that would, that would be my only concern, is that I don't know how that all is lined out, but I think that'd probably be a question for the Law Director, just as a follow-up.
Something.
All right, that's two that's to have, thank you.
That was an excellent answer.
I typically don't try to give answers to things I don't know about.
Kurt Van Kauzer again. The net metering with solar on city properties, this actually came to mind from when we were at the OML conference last spring, and the gentleman speaking there, and I was unaware of this until he said it, but electricity and natural gas production, or not production, but that as a service, he said are the only two things that an enterprise service can make a profit, and actually in some situations, take its excess profits and put it into the general fund. He said that a court would have to approve it, like, once a year, the transfer of the money. So, that's, that's what got me really thinking about this solar thing, was, because, you know, we got the water, and we got the sewer, and the trash enterprise funds, but we can't, we can't take profits from those and put them in the general fund. And the general fund is where we need money the most desperately right now. So, that's the whole reason for even thinking about this solar, and, kind of talking with, I talked to the attorney that was at the OML conference, and basically, so, the city can be an electric, electricity provider, and you can actually take over electricity, you can force AEP out and take over it if you want. Now, in that scenario, you still have to pay AEP fair market value for their infrastructure they have built in this town. But, and at that point, I believe it would, you know, to take over the full electric thing, like, what Galleon's doing over there, you know, it would, your upfront cost would be astronomical, because the infrastructure they have built is just off the charts as far as what it's valued at. But, this net metering thing is kind of something different. It's, you're not really taking over the grid portion of the electric service, you're kinda, you're kinda just getting between the grid and the customer and making like, an agreement. So, I don't think, and, and I, talking to that attorney as well, I, I asked him about that, and he said it's kinda, it's kind of a very new concept now, he said it really hasn't been established, like, is that considered you being an electric supplier or not? So, you know, I think Bussaras could be the first, and possibly come up with something here that makes the city money, allows us to transfer money into the general fund, because we, we need to be doing everything we can be doing to generate revenue for the city. I don't think there's any disagreement on that idea. I had talked to Kaylee about it, she indicated there was questions we would need to ask the state auditor. I told her I would get her the, the questions so that she could forward them on, and I haven't had time to do that part yet. But, I still want to look into that, and for sake of time, I'm gonna be done right now.
Kurt, Kurt. That gentleman you're talking about, that's the one from New Albany, right? Wasn't it?
Um, the, the one guy that was the Safety Service Director, he was, that's Ohio's Safety Service Director. He's the one that told us that you can be a electric or a natural gas company as a city, and potentially, in those situations, take enterprise funds and put them directly into the general fund, if the court approves it.
That was an interesting conversation, that was very cool. That was an interesting conversation we had down there with you.
Yeah.
Jimmy, all I'm looking for is a zero electric bill for the city.
Right.
That's outside the box, it's making a profit, but.
All right, anything else? All right, we're gonna adjourn Public Lands and Buildings at 8:06 PM.
46, 2025.
Plating member, or plating committee will come to order at 8:10. Members, Senator Chair, Kevin Myers, Vicky Deschawn, James Mees, Chair, public participation. See none, will need the approval.
Mr. Mees, I'd like to make a motion to collectively approve the Minnesota Republican Act of January 23rd.
I'd like a second off.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Approved. Open projects?
No.
Open projects. Public participation.
Well, are we not talking about this legislation on the creation of 1193 that you sent?
Oh, the, yeah, matter of fact.
That's open projects.
That is open projects.
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, duh. Thank you, Aaron.
Sorry. It's been a long night.
Yeah.
Okay, just get this or not? I think I sent it to you.
Yeah, an email.
Okay. How do you feel about it? Give me your feeling. Sound good, bad, evil?
It looked okay, I saw your changes written on it, on the one.
It was actually Landen's, which I liked the changes.
Yes.
And he got with.
No, no, I was done with it.
Okay.
They're already done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kevin?
Would you like a motion to a?
Well, I think Vicky.
Vicky's got a red pen.
I thought I was saving her for last.
That's a blue pen.
Yeah. First off, we have it titled as the Health and Safety Committee, and it's the Plating Committee.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Then again, and it's probably just me, but let me be me, in the caption, second line, I think we don't want Bussaras City.
Right.
It's Bussaras Codified Ordinances. Then, when we come down to Section 1, because you've done this, this is what we always did when I was down at the Law Director's Office, and I noticed that you have followed suit, is you pretty much take what's in the caption and you reiterate it again in the section. What we are missing after, in the second line where it says, under Part 11 entitled Planning and Zoning, we should also insert after that, under Title 11 entitled, Additional And I understand under 1193.03, number one, where we're changing business to industrial, I understand that change. What are we doing under B, where it says all other zoning districts, and then up above it says commercial question mark? What?
We were, did you get the updated version?
I was gonna say, did you get the updated version? There was an email today.
Yeah, this is the one I got today.
We got the one with the corrections written on it.
Oh.
I got the one on February the 6th, at 2:52 PM.
Couple of.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Did you guys get the one that said final, or the one that said final, final?
Just legislation, sorry.
Because it's not done until it says final, final, please be final for the love of God.
That'll be the heading of the next.
This one doesn't say final, nothing.
No, and I only received one.
Yeah, we, we only got the one with the handwriting.
Yeah.
It wasn't really corrected.
This is what we got. Okay, that is, that has since been edited, and.
Do you want, do you want to read the B part? Where she was just looking, that was, that was the big changes.
Yeah, let me pull it up. Did you edit it?
Yeah.
Today?
He edited.
That was all other commercial zoning.
I thought I sent it to you guys.
Not.
Oh, you sent it to Jim?
Yeah.
Okay, then I won't tear into you.
Sent.
Pardon?
Uh, yep.
You sent it?
Yep.
Just now.
No.
Oh.
Oh, I must've sent the wrong one.
Yeah, you sent us this one.
Yeah, you sent the one with the handwriting all over it.
But, I mean, I, I see what it, what it was, it was just changing it to all other, or, commercial zoning.
Okay, so now I can look at and answer my.
That's what she was asking.
One is G.I., and.
Yep, I sent the wrong one.
All other commercial zoning districts.
I was gonna say, I sent it to Miranda, and I sent it to you at 5:04.
And I sent it to them.
And you sent it to them.
Yeah.
And I was here at 5:30.
I didn't get anything at 5:30.
Wait a minute, you didn't send anything at 5:04?
No, 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 we sent it to these two at 5:04.
No, we sent it to those two at 5:04. Yeah, we never saw that one.
So, we haven't seen that one.
Okay, okay. I got it at 2:52.
All right, we're saying here, I would refer it as a conditional use.
So.
And list district in which, I can't read what that writing is.
In which, scribbled out, is, is a C.
Hold on, I can interpret, because I, I interpreted from, let me pull up, let me pull up Landen's.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding what I'm gonna approve.
I would prefer, prefer it to as conditional use rather than variance.
All right, so, the first blue edit, the first one in 1193.03, is changing from general business district to general industrial district, which is.
Which is what it's listed as in the letters.
Yeah.
And then, all other zoning districts, found in B, all other zoning districts, has been changed to commercial zoning districts.
All right.
And, instead of a variance, they suggested that we refer to it as a conditional use rather than variance.
Okay.
And then, they, they said that it would be beneficial to list in which districts can get the conditional use, however, we talked about that, and came to the conclusion that that's no longer necessary.
Okay.
So, I have changed to commercial districts and a condition, and a.
Conditional use is a variance.
How does it read? It reads, "All other commercial zoning districts shall be, shall require a conditional use determination granted by the Zoning Appeals Board pursuant to Chapter 1149 of this title to authorize any and all adult use as well as medical marijuana facilities inside set zoning districts."
I apologize, I didn't send you the right one.
It's okay, I, I figured those changes were in it, that was why I didn't send it.
Okay.
All right, so we have draft legislation, and this one, you said you did change it out to not say health and safety? Uh, yes. Okay. And this is not an emergency?
And then you added, in Section 1, after zoning.
We sent it to Planning Commission before it goes to full counsel? Or after this is passed?
It's the requirement, so you're establishing new regulations for zoning code, so it would need to go to Planning Commission, and then come back here, and then we set up a public hearing.
Okay.
And do it that way.
Let's do that. Send it to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
As he amended it.
Can I have a motion?
I just made that, sir.
Seconding it.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Awesome.
There, it says final dash final.
So.
So, we're almost done.
Any more open projects? Going once, one, two. Shuffling papers. Good, Vicky?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 8:18.
Finance Committee, February 6, 2025.
Call Finance Committee meeting to order at 8:19 PM. Members present are James Mees, Christopher Maritz, Vicky Deschawn, and myself, Kevin Myers, Chair. Is there any public participation for finance? See none. You have before you the minutes for the January 23, 2025 Regular Finance Committee meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the January 23, 2025 Regular Finance Committee meeting minutes.
Motion by Ms. Deschawn, second by Mr. Mees, any discussion? If not, I'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Deschawn?
Yes.
Mr. Mees?
Yes.
Mr. Maritz? Yes, I mean, yes as well, motion passes. On the ODOT State Route 4. Motion passes. On the ODOT State Route 4 North, there's no expenditure money, but just to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's, I would just do a voice vote to say that this committee approves of it, having already been approved by, what was it, the Service Committee. So I'm just going to ask for your approval. Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mr. Maritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschawn?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. As far as utility service superintendent, no action needed yet on that. Are there any open projects anybody wishes to discuss for finance? Mr. Me?
Nope.
Mr. Maritz?
Not this time.
Mrs. Deschawn?
No.
Is there any public participation? Seeing none, we are adjourned at 8:20 PM.